Welcome to the City of Kingman Meeting of the Clean City Commission, April 17th, 2025. And we'll do a roll call.
Chairperson Carpenter.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Helton.
Here.
Commissioner Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Jocelyn is absent. Commissioner Bo.
Here.
Commissioner Salem.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with the presentation of the Annual Open Meeting Law and Parliamentary Procedure Training.
All right, thank you for bearing with me while I figured out the technological stuff. And I'm kind of echoing, I don't know if there's anything we can do about that.
I thought I heard an echo as well.
Yeah.
What's your name?
Oh, my name is Amy Shriver, I'm the Deputy City Attorney for the City of Kingman. As you could see in your agenda, this is just an annual open meeting law training. You guys are going to get this every year, some people have already seen it because they've been on other commissions or other boards or things like that, but it's always good to just have a refresher even if you've had it before. I'm wondering if IT can fix that, but may just have to live with it. All right, so we'll just go ahead and get started. It's the public policy of the state that meetings. All right, we'll just work with it. So it's the public policy of the state that meetings of public bodies be conducted openly and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings which contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be decided. So the main goal of open meeting law is that all meetings of any public body shall be public and that all persons desiring to be there and to attend and listen to the deliberations in the proceedings can do so. Basically, what does this mean? That the public's business may be conducted in public. Donna, is there any way you could contact IT because it's very distracting? That's okay. Oh, you're hearing it again.
Do we fix it? No.
Okay. Okay, yay. No more echo. All right. Yes, it is. All right, so why does this matter? It's going to protect the public and preserves their right to participate in government and it's also going to protect and public officials and protect the trust of the public in our, in those officials. Who must comply with open meeting law, that's going to be you guys. Under Arizona statute, a public body is defined as the legislature, all boards and commissions, so obviously this is going to apply to you. What constitutes a meeting? The gathering in person or through technological devices? And we're going to talk about that in a few slides because obviously this is what we think of when we think of a meeting, but you can have a meeting on social media, through email, things like that, if you do have a quorum of people participating, but we'll talk about that in a second. Obviously, we have a quorum tonight, you guys have seven, so to have a quorum you would have to have four. And again, a quorum is defined as a majority of the members of a board or a commission. Vacant positions do not reduce the quorum requirement. What constitutes a meeting? Technological devices include, but are not limited to, emails, Twitter, LinkedIn, Facebook, Instagram, text messages, things like that. So if you get an email from staff about a matter that's likely to come before this commission and that would be presented to the public, and let's say that someone replies all and it ends up being a quorum, that could be, and some sort of decision is made or you guys talk about it, that could be an open meeting law violation. Or if you're on Facebook and someone posts a status, "I really like this item and I think I'm going to, you know, vote yes on it," and someone else comments, "Yeah, I'm going to vote yes on that too," someone likes it, you kind of end up having a quorum and it could be an open meeting law violation. Splintering the quorum, I like to call this like a game of telephone. So if two people talk about an item that's going to be, come before you guys and then one person goes and talks to someone else and then that person goes and talks to someone else, you could end up making a quorum and in the end you could violate open meeting law. Informing the public, no meeting may take place with less than 24 hours' notice to the general public and each member of the public body. Obviously, as a kind of an internal deadline, we try to do well before that, usually at least three days or so, but the absolute deadline is 24 hours. Also, to comply with open meeting law, you must have an agenda that includes the notice of the date, time, and the location of the meeting. It must include specific matters to be discussed, considered, or decided at the meeting. And it must contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of matters to be discussed or decided. One thing to really just keep in mind with the agenda is that if it's not on the agenda, you can't talk about it and it's up to the chairperson to redirect the conversation. I know Carl is responsible for that at the council meetings. I've had to cover for him and I've had to do it too and interrupt and it feels awkward, but you really want to just stick to what's on, on the agenda. Say that again?
We have done it.
Yeah. And you really just want to stick to what's on the agenda. And if something else comes up, you can always put it on a future agenda and just talk about it then. And like it says below in bold, if an action is taken on an item that's not properly noticed, that particular action is null and void. Calls to the public. An open call to the public is an agenda item that allows the public to address the public body on any topic of concern within the public body's jurisdiction, even if it's not listed on the agenda. These are actually not required by state statute and we can impose a reasonable time limit. I believe at the city council meetings it's three minutes, so they get a little timer and a little countdown when they, their time is almost up. Calls to the public, you have four options, I believe, there of things that are said by someone during the call to the public. If they call you outright and say, you know, "You are an unethical, you know, scoundrel" or something along those lines, you can respond to the criticism directly after the call to the public. I know Carl is hesitant about this because that can kind of just create a back and forth. You know, people making comments from the, from the audience, this person coming over again and again to the meeting, so sometimes silence is just golden. You can ask staff to review the item if it's something that you want to have looked into further. And again, you can ask that it be, ask that it be placed on a future agenda or, like I said before, silence is golden, you can just sit in silence. And again, call to the public is, is not mandated, it's only permitted if it's specifically listed on the agenda. The public's right, the public has a right to attend, listen, tape record, and videotape, but they do not have a right to speak unless there's a call to a public or be disrupted, disruptive. Open meeting law, sanctions for violations. So these range anywhere from a civil penalty, which is going to be having to pay money, and then being removed off the commission. What usually happens, and I've had to defend one of these before, is someone will make a complaint to the Attorney General's Office and then they investigate it and they listen to the record and everything like that to see what happened. They write out all the facts, they send it over to our office and then we write a response. We either say, you know, "That's not what happened," or we say, you know, "Our bad, that was an open meeting law violation, this is what we're going to do to remedy it." So doing more education for you guys and things like that. The Attorney General's Office is really about education, more so about punishment. They just want to make sure that people are following these laws. Moving on to conflicts of interest. It's illegal to fail to declare a conflict of interest under Arizona law or to participate or otherwise be involved in discussions on issues or contracts where such a conflict exists. Sounds kind of scary and intimidating, but it's not necessarily a bad thing. It just means that you're involved with something money-wise or you have an ownership interest in something that's going to come before this board or come before this commission. In general, a conflict of interest will result when an officer or an employee of a city or town or a relative, is what it says there. So it could be a conflict that pertains to one of your immediate family members, like a spouse, a parent, a child, something along those lines. Find out ahead of time what your conflicts are. You're always free to call our office to discuss. Carl has a lot of background with this and we'll work, work through it with you to find out if you do have an actual conflict. There's something in statute that's called a remote interest. You may have some sort of monetary or proprietary type interest, but it's so minor that it's actually not a conflict of interest. These are just like exceptions to the rule. So if you just have one of these remote interests, you can vote and participate in the discussion. I'm not going to read through all these, these are what are listed in statute, but under item J, here's an example of that. It just says, "A member of a trade, business, occupation, profession, or class of persons consisting of at least 10 members, which is no greater than the interest of the other members in that trade, business, occupation, profession, or class of persons." So that would be if you had a person that was an electrician, for example, on a board or commission and you're going to do something like impose a rule that all electricians must pay a $1,000 licensing fee. Under J, because there's at least 10 electricians in the City of Kingman, you are able to vote on the matter. Now, if there are only three, that would be another issue and you may have to recuse yourself. But again, there's, these can be complicated, but Carl is always willing to talk, to sort those out. And again, those are just the statutes that apply to that. Finally, basic parliamentary procedure. So what is that exactly? It's just a set of rules for conduct at meetings that allows everyone to be heard and make decisions without confusion. Obviously, we don't want people talking or shouting over each other. And why is it important? It's just a time-tested method of conducting business at meetings and it's just important that everybody knows these basic rules. How are motions presented? You wait until the last speaker is finished, address the chairperson, wait until the chairperson recognizes you, make your motion, speak in a clear and concise manner, state a motion affirmatively, say, "I move that we," rather than "I move that we do not." You know, sometimes the language can get a little, get a little jumbled up, but it's best to just try to make it as clear as possible so people actually know exactly what they're supporting. You wait for someone to second your motion, another member will second your motion or the chairperson will call for a second. And if there's no second to your motion, then it's lost. The chairperson states your motion, the chairperson will say, "It has been moved and seconded, that we thus place in your motion before the membership for consideration and action." The membership can either debate your motion or that, or may move just directly to a vote. And then they can, like I said, put it to a vote and if there's no more discussion, then a vote will be taken. Again, parliamentary procedure is just a clean, best way to get things done at meetings, but it will only work if you use it properly, allow properly, allow motions that are in order, have members obtain the floor properly, speak clearly and concisely, and obey the rules of debate, and most importantly, just be courteous, which is always good advice. All right. Any questions?
Thank you. If a adopt-a-block is having an application come through and it affects your neighborhood, is that something that you need to acknowledge?
So as far as conflict of interest go, rather than answering it like right on the spot, it's probably something you'd want to call in our office and talk about.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any further comments or questions? Good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. So item number two, approval of minutes. Consideration of minutes for approval. Consideration of the January 16th, 2025, regular meeting minutes as written or with notes, corrections. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes for January 16th, 2025.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. Everybody in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are passed. Item number three, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any comments from the public tonight? Guess that'd be no. Okay. Action, item number four, action items. And event calendar update. And I'll give it to you, Kealan.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the commission, and welcome Commissioner Salem and Commissioner Bo. Appreciate you guys being here with us this evening. This item is a regular meeting agenda item so that any events that may arise can be scheduled to be discussed and participation decided upon. Staff has asked that the commissioners look for events and activities that would benefit from Clean City Commission participation. Any additional events the commissioners know of and which they think could benefit from Clean City Commission participation can be discussed at this time. The United Ways Day of Caring event is scheduled for Saturday, April 19th. And in conjunction, the Clean City Commission is holding an adopta, excuse me, an Adopt-A-Highway cleanup. The Adopt-A-High cleanup is scheduled to begin at 8:00 a.m. at the Public Works Department, 3700 East Standee Divine Avenue. The Clean City Commission's Adopt-A-Highway area begins at Flying J and ends at the Public Works Department. It encompasses both sides of Andy Divine Avenue's Route 66. The solid waste department provides trash bags and grabbers. And there is a limited number of grabbers that we have available. But we do ask that you bring your own gloves, wear closed-toed shoes, and sunscreen. And then the MC4 Mojave Community College Computer Club, tech, excuse me, Technology Recycle Drive has also taken place on April 19th from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This event will be located at the City Kingman Public Works, 3700 East Standee Divine Avenue. It's a busy Saturday, this Saturday's. And then on Saturday, May 3rd, Mojave County's Free Residential Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event will be held at the old Mojave County Public Works Department, literally right across the street from the City Kingman Public Works facility. It's located at 3675 East Standee Divine Avenue. That event begins at 8:00 a.m. and ends at 1:00 p.m. And then looking out further on the event calendar. So we covered this stuff on the 19th and we've obviously got First Friday, excuse me, on May 2nd. And then another one on June 6th and July 4th. And then our next Clean City Commission meeting is scheduled for July 17th. And then we have a list of some additional First Fridays there that. Is there anything else that the commission would like to be considered for the event calendar?
Do we have any motions to add to the calendar? Any events? Possibilities? I plan on being at the First Fridays with the, with the promotions table, I guess you would call it, promotion slash prize table. So I didn't make it the first one, it was a little cold and windy, so.
And there's plenty more to come, right?
Well, they say that you're more likely to have a white Easter here in Kingman than a white Christmas, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, so, yeah.
Good, Chairman, I had a question about Earth Day. And possibly, maybe if not this year, maybe next year we bring something. I know it's kind of close to our Adopt-A-Highway. And, but maybe with a year in advance, Earth Day always has that cleaning and Clean City vibe about it. So maybe we plan something for next year. Just the more events we get, the more awareness we get with our commission as well.
Yeah, we were talking about adding a second cleanup.
But that's only three days later. Earth Day is April 22nd.
Yeah, but I was talking about the fall, we were talking about doing something in the fall. So spring and fall cleanups, so we could come up with something there.
We can certainly discuss that now, sorry, Commissioner James, go ahead.
So I was, I know the schools get really involved with Earth Day and maybe if we did a Centennial Park cleanup or something.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the academy's right there, so we could invite all the other schools. I know they do events as well.
It's a great idea.
And so just something to throw out there.
Absolutely.
And just to underscore that, we used to participate in some Earth Day programs as well, some tree donations, some tree planning programs and stuff like that.
Yeah, we did, and we also participated with, I believe it was Dig a Community Garden.
Thank you.
I don't believe they're having an event this year.
So. Well, I guess we should put out some information, like if we get it together and let some younger kids know or people that want to get involved. And you said which park?
Centennial.
A Centennial? And around it, and around the block or whatever?
And it doesn't have to be just Centennial, it could be the Wash that runs across not just North Campus but also across the academy. It doesn't have to be just a park, it could be.
The field across the street?
Yeah, exactly. We have a lot of desert that gets a lot of plastic bags, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea, we should implement that, get it going.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Have, do you work with the schools at all on any of these? Is anybody involved with the schools? Don't the kids have to do a certain amount of community service?
We do, and, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Donna.
We used to participate with the schools, we had different contests with them, but after COVID, we haven't started that back up again. So that's a possibility.
Maybe somebody should be appointed to go to the schools and discuss what we could do together to. do together to, if we're talking about the fall thing, that might be nice to just go. And you look like somebody who would like to go into the schools and try and...
You know, this, we just got the Kayak, the Kingman Youth Advisory Committee, last year, and they're already in the schools and their roles of leadership, so maybe, and I know that Annie has a direct line to their leader, to their board, so they can maybe...
They have a commission, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
So maybe we reach out to them and see if there's a collaboration opportunity between CCC and Kayak?
Okay.
Yeah. And that would be you? I'm trying to make sure that there's a person going to do this. It's always good to talk about it, yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, we can definitely reach out and see what they want to do.
Is this the time we can make a motion for that? Of putting somebody in charge of that idea?
I would be open to it, Donna, if you're okay with it.
Yeah.
So, I feel free.
So do we have it in a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I make a motion that Commissioner, I'm sorry, I don't remember names.
Eric.
Eric works with the, is it an advisory committee or is it a?
The Kayak.
The Kayak to work with us in conjunction on maybe some kind of a fall cleanup somewhere in town, or get together and figure that out, yeah?
Sounds good.
So that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Great. It's a great idea. Let's get the community involved.
I have a question about the First Fridays. And you said that you will be there. Does everybody participate in the public information booth, or?
You can show up if you'd like. Yeah. So, yeah, voluntary. I'll be there, I'll set it up. And another thing about the information table, all the stuff's at my house, and I was thinking, you know, what if someone else wanted to use it? We could put it back at the Public Works Office, so if somebody else wants to go do some promotional stuff, then it'd be available, because I'm only taking it out once a month.
Through the chairs to Dana, we used, we got in trouble because we were violating open meeting laws, because we were texting each other saying who's going. And so technically, we had a quorum by texting, so we would go down and give out the information. But we didn't ever discuss the business of the board. We were just handing out information about the Clean Cities Commission. So a lot of us used to go down on First Fridays.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, what does maybe everybody volunteer for? Like, I'll do an hour, or an hour and a half, or two hours, and then somebody else comes in, and I just didn't know how it worked.
The city, is there, right? You have city employees that are there? Is that correct?
We do have some.
So does there have to be an announcement made if there's going to be a quorum of us at First Friday?
Nope, you just show up. Say, if I'm not going to be there, I'll let Donna know. And, but usually I'll be there through the summer months, and then, yeah, but I was thinking, yeah, go ahead, Kealan.
And if I may correct, so we do have city employees there, they may not necessarily be at the Clean City Commission booth. Usually Randy champions that, or Commissioner Carpenter champions that by himself a lot of times, I think.
Oh, Wayne's always there.
Wayne's always there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So, are there any more comments or questions regarding the calendar, then, the calendar of events? Well, I guess we need to come up with a date for the fall cleanup then, to get to...
I think we could either do that now, or if it makes more sense, we could do it at our July meeting if we want some time to figure that out.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll do that in July. Okay.
Is, on that note, real quick, can we also, is next year's Adopt a Highway cleanup already scheduled? Should we correlate both cleanups with Kayak?
That'd be nice.
I mean, if there's a date already scheduled, then I'll let them know that that's the day. If it's not scheduled, I'll kind of bring that into the, into the work so that we can discuss.
Yeah, I mean, you have more promotion, then more people might get involved, better for the city.
Commissioner Jinkus, I don't think we have a date set that far out ahead, so certainly flexible, yes.
Okay, then we're moving on to B, Adopt a Block Update.
Ready? Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission, I don't have a lot to report on the Adopt a Block program. We don't have any new applications that we've received. From our last meeting, Commissioner Helton had expressed the interest in working on this program.
I met with the Kingman Pastoral Association on the twenty-seventh of last month. There was ten people there, that wasn't bad, and I handed out all the information with applications. Of course, those were people from county too, not just city, but I told them all about it. And then yesterday, day before you, today's seventeenth, yesterday, I met with the Quanis, and I was their guest speaker and talked to them about that. It was about twelve people there, but again, it's Easter weekend, I think that there's a lot of people gone. But we had a good conversation, and they were talking about, because they meet at Calico's, and so they were talking about maybe doing Beale Street right there, and then, of course, they're all business people, and so I'm just trying to get it out there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So anything further on Adopt a Block? I guess just further promotion on that program, and hopefully people will sign up. Need to visit more businesses, I guess, and get that going. Any more questions or comments on that item? Moving along. Item C, get to welcome new commissioners. And we're gonna welcome Dana Bowe and Mary Ann Salem. Welcome. Want to introduce yourselves?
I've been here for six years, moved here from Wyoming. And Kingman is a lot like a small town like Casper, and I love that, and I love the people that I've met. Everybody's really friendly, and so, yeah, I've just, you know, went through the Citizens Academy, which was a ball. Just had a really good time with that, and I would encourage everybody to do that, so...
And it's in October.
Yeah, yeah, they're doing one now, aren't they? Yeah.
It sounds like if you're a part of that, Commissioner Bowe, that we'll see you next week at the Public Works portion. Are you involved in this one?
No, I've already done it.
You did the prior one.
Yes, I did one in the fall, I believe it was. Yeah, so had a good time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great, interesting. And, you know, the thing that really impressed me so much was the professionalism and the kindness and the knowledge of all of the city employees that we came across, every single one of them.
Yep.
So that was a good thing to do, because Casper didn't always have such great city employees, so I appreciated it a lot.
Well, welcome to Kingman.
Thank you, thank you.
Mary Ann, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi. First, I want to thank City Council for appointing me to this commission. I really appreciate it, being able to contribute some time and my knowledge. I moved here to Kingman in two thousand eight, and since then, I've been involved in various committees and activities, and I felt a desire to be a part of this, because I'm seeing so many positive, good changes in Kingman. I'm loving it, and I want to see it continue and grow, and I want to support what everybody's been doing, so wherever I can help. Thank you.
Fantastic, well, welcome.
Thank you.
If I may, Chairman, I just want to take a moment to thank both of you for your service as well, and it's good to see, well, I know we're one short tonight, but Commissioner Drosland will be back, it's good to see a full commission.
Yeah, for sure. And I was remiss last meeting to welcome our new liaison, Mr. Ward, Smiley Ward, welcome. We're on to item five, reports, Neighborhood Services Report.
I have to preface this presentation by thanking the Neighborhood Services Team back there. They did this on relatively short notice. Short notice being, I think, Tuesday they received notification, and of course, that was, that was my fault, so I take responsibility for that, and I, but I certainly appreciate them taking the time to come present on such short notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the commission, thank you for having me here. My name is Kelly Pampa. I am a Neighborhood Services Officer with our Development Services Department. I'm just going to give you a quick little update on our Neighborhood Services Program. So a little quick background, I started with Neighborhood Services last April, a year ago, and Neighborhood Services had just recently transitioned over from being Police Department to being Development Services, so we are kind of getting, getting the ball rolling there. We, our second Neighborhood Services Officer at that time, Evelyn, transferred to Public Works in the summer, so I was on my own there for a few months, and then in October, we got our new second Neighborhood Services Officer, Zach. So it's been two of us for about six months now, we're finally starting to kind of get our feet under us, so I'll give you some idea what we've been doing. So this is for that past year, April through April. We opened five hundred and twenty-four new cases. We've closed four hundred and thirty-eight of them. Our goal is always voluntary compliance. If we can get things cleaned up voluntarily, that's always the goal. Most of the time, that is the case. Our average open cases run from about ninety to about a hundred and twenty that we're working on at any given time. Right now, we're at about ninety, but the weeds are starting to sprout, so we anticipate that going up pretty quickly. That was part of our increase in caseload last year, as we took over weed complaints from fire departments, so that really adds on. When we don't have the voluntary compliance, we do forward our cases to the city attorney's office for abatement. We've taken about seventeen cases to city attorney's office within the last year. We've done two court ordered abatements so far. We have two that we're currently working on, and a few more potentially coming down the road. The kind of complaints that we take, so public nuisances, trash, junk and debris, abandoned junk vehicles, shopping carts, sign violations, weeds, and then miscellaneous other zoning and building complaints, setback complaints, and different kinds of things with buildings, kind of the majority of things that we do. These are primarily complaint-based cases that we have that are called in from the public or received from city management, and that is primarily what we are dealing with. On top of the complaints that we're addressing, we have started this spring with our weed abatement program, kind of trying to get ahead of the weeds this year, putting out some educational efforts. So this is what went out with the utility bills as a mailer to kind of let the public know that they're responsible for controlling their weeds, as well as those bordering their property, including the easements and alleys, which is a big one. We've also had some great social media posts, thanks to Sarah Hall, and we had a presentation at the last City Council meeting, kind of going over the weed abatement program and plans with that. So our enforcement on that is, we will proactively enforce the main corridors, so all of the main streets stocked in Andy Divine and of those, we will proactively be addressing complaints that we see out there. As far as the residential streets, it's going to be primarily complaint-based as people turn them in to us. We have some little door hangers for correction notices to give people a little heads up, hey, you need to get your weeds done. If that doesn't happen, then we would move forward with our notice of violation.
Is your speaker on?
Maybe, I'm not standing close. Sorry.
Too much rock and roll music. I have, I'm having a hard time.
I apologize.
No, it's really important what you're saying, so...
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's about that. As far as proactive enforcement, we're also going to be doing some proactive enforcement of sign violations in the coming months. We should have more information on that for you guys in the future, because we're still working through what state statute requires versus our zoning sign code regulations, but we're working on getting some of the, some of the temporary signs cleaned up around town. So we'll be working on getting that going in the coming months. But that's about it, if anybody has any questions.
Wow, thank you, Kelly. I think that's fabulous. We need something like that, for sure, especially with the weeds. Lots of trash, lots of weeds here, so is there any questions or comments for Kelly?
Always. Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
You said you put on a door hanger, and then it goes to a notice of violation. Can you just explain the whole process? Does it end with a levy of a fine, or does it just go to the City of Kingman Attorney?
It would go to the attorney's office. We don't do citations, but it would be forwarded to the attorney's office, and it would be a court hearing, and then we would go from there.
Okay.
To, if we needed to get an abatement order, to do it ourselves, and then that would be a lien placed on the property.
Got it, thank you.
And you said sign violations?
Yeah, such as like temporary signs, banner signs, things like that. That'll be upcoming, that we'll be proactively looking for. We already proactively look for like yard sale signs and little, you know, boxes from a week ago that should have been, we'll grab those, but we'll be doing more as far as like the banner signs and things like that in the future.
Fabulous, well, thank you. Any more question, comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next up, item B on reports is recycling report.
And again, I just want to thank Kelly and Zach for being here again on such short notice, and the presentation that they gave, it was thorough, so we appreciate that. The next two items, but I guess not jumping too far ahead, recycling in particular, our wastewater, or excuse me, our wastewater, I'm thinking to our council meeting a couple nights ago, but anyway, our solid waste superintendent, Ed, is going to give a brief presentation regarding recycling, and then that'll be followed up by Ed also giving a presentation on our neighborhood cleanups as well.
Yeah, great.
Hello, everyone. So good news is we're leaning to try to get the recycling drop program back. We were challenged this budget year to be able to put some numbers together, as well as some different options for council to be able to take a look at. On March eighteenth, we presented those ideas to them. They did agree to move forward with a drop program. Three of the options that we gave them was the cost would be associated, everybody would pay for it, that had a solid waste bill, or it would be pay as you throw. When you came to the drop site, you could pay as you go, and then we also had a green waste program that we presented to them. They went ahead and went with the pay as you throw, so hopefully on May the twentieth, there's going to be another council meeting, there'll be a, let's see, a public hearing on it, so they'll give the people to be able to come down and voice their opinions, and then they'll vote, and then if everything goes well, then we'll be able to move forward once they strike the gavel and say, hey, that we can do this. So stay tuned for more information on that. Hopefully, in the July next meeting, I'll have some more information, how it's going to go, it's going to be out of Public Works, and, you know, hours of operation, stuff like that, so that's definitely some encouraging news.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Any questions regarding the recycling program? No?
Well, one question was, I take cans to the, was it the cart or whatever? There's a couple of recycling places. You get a little money for your cans, but this is for plastic and everything, because they only take a few different things.
Yeah, currently, there's two outlets that I'm aware of, Bulldog Recycling and then KAR, so you could take all your metals there. I believe Bulldog still takes cardboard and metals, you know, aluminum... Uh, I believe Bulldog still takes, uh, cardboard and metals, uh, you know, aluminum cans, stuff like that. The, the most difficult thing is getting, getting rid of plastic. And, uh, when we do our program, that was one of the recyclable items that we wanted to do was to be able to, uh, incorporate that into our drop program, so we can get that to the appropriate, uh, location to be recycled.
Great, thanks. I have one question. Are you worried about contamination or laziness, I should say?
Well, if, from previous meetings, you know, when we had, uh, all our recycling cans out in the neighborhoods, at the stores, stuff like that. Uh, contaminant ration, contamination rate was as high as 47, 50%. And that's why at that particular, you know, this goes back a couple years ago, that we ended up bringing them to Public Works. So once we were able to bring them to Public Works, we were able to get that contamination down to 10% because we were gonna meet you at the, at the gate when you come in, and we're gonna look and see what you got. We're gonna be able to tell you, we're gonna take everything except that, and then that homeowner, resident will take that back with them. So, it's, it's a great opportunity to be able to educate those residents and, and again, it was less than 10%. You know, when we're real busy, you know, there's a, a few times, you know, we got seven people dropping off same time. We only have one or two staffing and some things might slip through us, but we really got a really good clean product when we had it prior to COVID before we shut it down.
That's awesome, that you're gonna have someone there to meet them and, and make sure people aren't just hucking random traction there.
Yeah, we'll be able to get a good grip on it.
Thanks for reading it.
You bet. Will we move on to the next one?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, some of you were here when we, uh, were gonna do our free, uh, trash pickup, up to five cubic yards. We started that way back in October. Uh, for those of you that don't know, uh, we, as a commission, we kinda came up with the idea that we were gonna go door to door knocking and, uh, well, that didn't work. It just, uh, there was too many variables. Uh, safety was the biggest concern. The other concern was we couldn't find people at home. Uh, so, we decided to work with the Water Department. And what we did with the Water Department is we, um, there was four cycles that we distributed mailers out to. So if you got a water bill, it would come in your water bill. If you got an electronic water bill, it would be in your electronic page, you just had to know how to open it up. So, and we went ahead and did that, and so we did four of them. Uh, we held our very first one in November, we did another one in December, one in January, one in February. So, uh, we were just a tad bit under 300 work orders that we, uh, did collect. Uh, I think it was like closer to 270. Uh, since then, uh, those four closed, uh, we did open it up. So now, basically, if, if any of you saw it, we put it, did a PSA about it, basically saying, hey, if you didn't have the opportunity to do a free cleanup, here's your chance now, we're gonna do another, thank you, there, do another.
It was on Facebook yesterday, I couldn't get it out.
Yeah, we're gonna do another hundred of them, and we're shooting to do those in May. And I think today, we already have, well, I checked right before I left, uh, I think we're closer to like 60. We already had 60 of those work orders. So we're hoping, depending on how many work orders come in and what we're picking up, and we'll have some monies left, so we'll continue to spend your money, uh, to be able to do some free cleanups. But it's going really well, so, again, kudos to Donna and her staff. They're the ones that have to field all those phone calls, uh, but again, we do appreciate it, so. But it's, it's going real well, so. I'm gonna plug a number here. Uh, thank you for bringing the flyer, but they can always call Donna's office at 692-928-692-3115 to place an order. And again, the only stipulation is if they already took advantage of it during those other four months, they won't be able to do it again. And again, it's only up to five cubic yards that they can get rid of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also got the email from Sarah regarding that, yeah.
Good, good.
Wow, thank you.
All right.
That's awesome, what a great program.
Perfect, any other questions?
We good?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ed, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements, boards and commissions, liaisons, reports, availability, attendance and conference and seminars. Uh, anybody have any announcements?
I recommend to the new members of the board and some that don't know, if you sign up through the City of Kingman through their website to get their mailers in your email, this was in your email box from Sarah Hall. And she keeps you informed of street closures and everything else. And, and it's nice to be aware of what's going on in your city. As part of the commission, we may need to, to be, to make use of it. And that's it.
Yeah, good point. Anybody else with announcements? We good? Okay. Uh, Item Seven, uh, requests for future reports and updates. Who wants to go first?
I was curious, um, about what the process would be if Clean City Commission, I'm not saying we have a need for money, um, as a commission, but if we needed to buy trash bags or something, what's the process of, you know, funding and activity? Especially like, we need to do something with Kayak, do we come to the council to request funds? Do we have a budget? What's the process?
Commissioner Jengus, I would encourage you to, to reach out to Ed or I. Um, we do have a limited budget that council adopts, uh, each year, so you can certainly.
For the commission specifically?
For the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kealan, I have a question while you're up there. I was gonna ask it earlier. When they do the Day of Caring for the, um, they pick the date, we don't pick the date, correct? Okay, because Arbor Day is on the 25th of April and Earth Day is on the 22nd of April. It would be kinda nice to give them a subtle hint that it would be kinda nice if we kind of did it in conjunction and not on Easter weekend.
Okay, um. Mary Ann, any requests?
Not at this time.
Kathy? Dana?
No.
Okay. Um, there's a couple items I'd like to see, or think about, just some ideas. Uh, I'd like to see if we can get a contest to try to get the community involved with trash pickup. Um, make it a, uh, a thing where they could, uh, they'd have to sign up, maybe get a T-shirt for it or whatever and, uh, document over a period of time, six months or maybe even up to a year, and have cash prizes and a golden grabber award at the end for the top prize. Maybe that would get some younger kids involved, you know, and, uh, maybe they wanna make some, some money. Some pretty good top prize award, I'm thinking, if we can afford it, right? Um, so that's one thing. Um, I wanna know a little story, I was picking up trash over off of Eastern and one of our handout squishy globes was there in the landscape. I'm going, well, this ain't working. Right, the Clean City Commission squishy globe there, you know, from the, by the kids there. But anyway, it's in pretty good shapes, I'm gonna recycle it, give it away again. Um, so, we talked about, uh, streamlining the promotions, uh, with posters, that, that's in the works, actually. Uh, we talked about the temporary fencing idea and then First Friday, I'll be at the First Fridays, and that's pretty much it. And now, can we have an emotion to adjourn? The what? Oh, Kealan, do you have anything else?
No. Uh, Chairman Carpenter, thank you. I, um, I, I just would like to touch, um, on your first request regarding the prizes, um, the cash prizes specifically. That may be something that we wanna run by our City Attorney first. I won't claim to know the ins and outs of that, but I think it's a great idea. Yes, sir.
It might be fun.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have anything else for us, Kealan?
That's all I have.
Okay. Are we good? Can, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second. We are adjourned, thank you.